Now I can hear myself talking to myself.
Looking for Rita.
Yeah, she's in the back. She's in the way.
Oh, there she is. I'll scan, she'll just sit right up here.
Yeah.
Third or fourth row.
Your mind won't stay on.
Yes, yes it is.
How come?
Do I have to end it?
Did you see? Oh, I said, "I'm meeting on Thursday."
He's the expert.
Same. So I asked Eric for it.
As long as I keep doing these, I'm okay.
You know, I just remember if it was Haggins or Haggins.
Say Haggins. Good morning, welcome to the December 8th Board of Supervisors Meeting. If you would please rise with me as we salute the flag and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, be seated. As you can hear, I'm a little bit raspy still this morning, so I'm going to turn item number one over to Supervisor Worthley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is my pleasure on behalf of the board this morning to acknowledge the good work of some of our departments, programs, and community partners. And I'll do this sort of in the fashion of the grand awards. We have as an honorable mention, we'd like to congratulate the County Council for receiving honorable mention for the development of the Legal Officer Manual for Emergency Response. The legal manual that consolidates authorities, templates, and advice for County Council to quickly refer to during emergencies, funded by a grant from Homeland Security. This manual was originally developed in response to 911. It has since been expanded to include pandemic health threats, bioterrorism, and natural disasters. So congratulations to County Council for their honorable mention. And then every year, the California State Association of Counties asks counties to share information about innovative programs that have been implemented throughout the state that provide better service to their local constituents. The programs are evaluated by a panel of judges, and awards are given based on the value of the programs that they provide to the community. I'm proud to say that this is the third year in a row that Tulare County has been awarded recognition for an innovative program. In 2007, it was Health and Human Services Youth Transitions Program. In 2008, it was Health and Human Services Drug Exposed Infant Program. There's a trend here. This year, it is Health and Human Services Baby Steps to Parenting Program. Now, I have to tell you, I chuckle a little bit with Baby Steps. Anybody who's ever seen the movie What About Bob will know what I'm talking about. Baby Steps to Parenting is a 10-week prevention program developed for mothers of drug-exposed infants in response to the high percentage of referrals to county services due to prenatal drug exposure. The program addresses the needs of mothers, including help with depression, anxiety, low self-esteem, et cetera. And those of the exposed infants as well. Central to the program is the concept of bundling services, such as group therapy, nutrition, exercise classes, and infant massage classes. The pilot group was funded through in-kind contributions. The program is a long-term investment with potential savings coming from families not re-entering the child welfare services system. Pilot participants appreciated that it did not focus on past drug use and included listening and reflection. None of the participants have re-entered the system. Baby Steps is a collaborative effort of Child Welfare Services, Central Valley Regional Center, and Tulare County Office of Education. Of nearly 200 submissions, the Baby Steps to Parenting Program was selected to receive a 2009 CSAC Merit Award. At this time, I would like the Baby Steps partners to come down to the well for a presentation. Barbara Gross from Child Welfare, Rachel Haggins from CVRC, and Maxine Epperson from the Office of Education.
Congratulations, it's a very nice little, I don't know if we split this up three ways. I don't think we should minimize it or share it, can we share with it? Do we get a photo of us in this all together?
Did you see that picture?
They're all saying, "No, you go."
We wanted to thank you for being here to support us with this program. We'd like to take it further out into the community, to many of the family resource centers, and adapt it so that it works in each of our small communities. We have too many young mothers that feel isolated and alone, and we want to empower them to be the best moms they can be. Thank you.
Well, we go from Baby Steps to Teenage Steps. Mr. Forbes.
Good morning, Jeff Forbes, Board Supervisor's Office, and I'm here as staff for the Tulare County Youth Commission. Before you today is voting on the awards for the 2010 Step Up Youth Activities Grant Program, so I'm going to give a little bit of background on the Youth Commission and kind of process of how we got to this point. And I'm going to turn over to Janice Lehman, the Chair of the Youth Commission, to talk a little more about the programs specifically. As you know, Youth Commission was created in 2008 to administer this program. And then we also took on the Service Learning Grant Program as well. It's an 11-member commission, all volunteer, and it's an advisory body to your board. The main function is to review the Step Up Grants and make recommendations to your board. And as I said before, we've also taken on a couple rounds of the Service Learning Grant Program. For this program, there's $100,000 available countywide, $20,000 per district. Grant amounts are limited to between $2,000 and $10,000, so we know we have at least 10 grants that will be given out. And any Tulare County nonprofit organization that serves youth is eligible for these programs. Now, the timeline that we went through to get to this point, the RFP was available August 17th. We held a grant workshop here in these chambers on September 23rd to go over the details of the grant application and to answer any questions from the applicants. The deadline was on the 16th of October, and then on October 19th, myself and a few of the commissioners met to make sure that all of the minimum qualifications had been submitted with the grant applications. And there were a handful of those applications that were rejected for not meeting the requirements that they were asked to submit. Each grant that was reviewed was read by six members of the County Youth Commission. They submitted their scores and they were averaged together. We created ad hoc subcommittees for each district because we had average scores, but then we had to add funding to each score and each grant that was going to be recommended. We met on November 16th as an entire Youth Commission to go district by district to make the recommendations for the funding for which organizations would get how much money. A little bit of information for the applicants, and I know there are some of them here today, and they're aware of this as well. The Youth Commission is in the process of developing a measurement tool. We've come to the conclusion that numbers are good, but it's more quality than quantity. And so we want to see how this money is being used and make sure that there's a positive impact in these youth and they're having growth in things such as school attendance, participation, grades, community involvement. So at the December meeting of the Youth Commission, we will be adopting this measurement tool. Technical assistance is available, and this is for organizations that have received or will not be receiving funding this year. This is an opportunity to meet with a few members of the Youth Program, talk about the strengths and weaknesses of their application in hopes of improving their chances for future years. We did have a group that did this last year, and for the ones that reapplied, there were significant improvements in their application. So it did prove to be a valuable tool. So if any of the organizations are interested, they can contact me after your board votes this morning. And then we are going to have a meeting and a reception in January with representatives from the organizations. The meeting will be just to kind of go over the parameters of the grant application and the requirements. And then we're going to have a reception for the public and your board, just to interact with the folks, give them a chance to talk about what they're doing, and so we can hear the good work that they're going to be doing with the board's $100,000. The request before you today is that you award the funding as recommended by the Youth Commission. And as you are aware, these are only recommendations that are forwarded from the Youth Commission, and your board has the authority to alter the funding amounts or do what you want with this funding that's before you. And one important note is that, as you're aware, last year only $70,000 was given out, but this year, the full $100,000 is being recommended to give out. So we at the Youth Commission are very happy that all of the $100,000 is set to be given out through all five districts. So before I turn over to Janice to talk about the grants themselves, does anybody have any questions about the process or kind of how we got to this point? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Janice Lehman. I've seen you before. Good morning. It's, this is a very exciting time for me to be here today, to be part of our recommendation and hope that you will follow that in awarding the grants. I just want to talk a little bit about some of these applications. I'll just make kind of some ballpark kind of statements. One thing that pleases me is that there are several of these potential recipients who are working with very at-risk youth in alternative settings, which I think is really exciting because many times, my experience has been that monies don't go to those kids because they're too hard to work with. And yet, we saw as a result of our monies last year and also with the service learning, what a difference it can make with those kind of youths. So I think that's very, very exciting. So if we look at District 1, J.J. Carron's is a school for alternative youth. And then the Boys and Girls Club of the Sequoias are going to be working in Farmersville, also with at-risk youth. So I think that's very exciting, too. And then the Boys and Girls Club of Tulare County, same kind thing. Greater Tulare Recreation Foundation, in the summer, that's a police program where they're working with youth. And then Grandma's House in Tulare is working with small children. And I think some of the advantage of that is if we can get these kids doing well in school and starting to really become, you know, the people that they can become and have some hope for themselves, we won't have to put so much money at the, you know, upper ends of the grant. And some of these grants also are not just, there are some faith-based organizations, too, with Tulare County Youth for Christ and Young Lives. Both of those applicants, I think, are very impressive, and they both rely heavily on volunteers that give hours and hours of their time not to proselytize. That's not what they're into. What they're into is to helping kids get back on track, recognize that they're worthy human beings, and that they have the hope of a very positive future. And again, we have something with Powell. And then one of the, District 4 Supervisor Worthley, you should feel very proud of District 4.
I do.
I think the best grant applications as a whole came from that district, and it was very, very difficult to make those distinctions. And it's exciting to see that kind of work going on in districts that I know there's a lot of poverty and not always a lot of opportunity for kids. So I think that was really, really exciting. And then, again, District 5, we are thrilled that we had, yay for District 5! We had very good applicants from District 5, and we are also having at-risk youth that are involved in that. And then the IHC Wild Places, both received $10,000. That was our recommendation is for $10,000 each. And I just want to repeat that the most exciting thing for me about this is that this really does have a nexus with what you had intended with Step Up. We're working with kids, all of these people are working with kids that are highly at risk. Some have already made some decisions that are not too positive. And we are hoping that these monies can go to turning them back the right way and giving all of these youth hope for a bright future. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. What I like about this board is it takes the politics out of this. On the front page, it says, "Do not call your supervisor. Do not call the Youth Commission. If you do, your application will be rejected." So I think it's a very good process that takes the politics out. Any discussion before we take our vote?
I just want to make one comment, Mr. Chair, that I think it's a really great thing that we offer assistance to those applicants that are unsuccessful because I know that it can be really frustrating for an organization that applies and is not awarded to not know why or how they can be awarded next year. And I know, just from attending meetings last year, that one recipient in my district applied last year and was not awarded, but this year they were awarded because they used the services provided by the Youth Commission and Youth Commission staff, Jeff. So thank you very much. And I think that that's a very successful aspect of this program, and I sure hope that continues going forward because that help and assistance is very important. So thank you.
Anything else?
I'd just like to say that I'm very excited that my district did apply and was granted some grants this time. It's pretty frustrating when you've got the money there and nobody even shows up to apply for it. So I'm very, very, very excited that we got these grants going forward. And I think one of these could be a spin-off of maybe one of our earlier grants, mentoring the kids in grammar school and high school. So good programs, and I'm just very, very glad that we had some participation in my district.
Chairman, all I wanted to say was that this was very successful last year, and this is a grant program that works quite well. We provide some seed money, and we have seen some great results from that. And I just, I'm confident we'll see the same thing coming up this year. And I could see in my district that there were the, looking at the scoring, it was extremely close. And so I'm going to chat with our staff about some of those ones that were very close, see if we can't maybe use some good works funds to kind of assist because, you know, they're very close in score. And also, I note that the Girl Scout program is one that was in a different part of my district as opposed to the other three, which are pretty much in the Cutlerosa community. So we'd like to see if we could help them out in that area, too. But anyway, my thanks to the Commission for the work that they did in reading all of these and scoring them. And as Mr. Chairman has said, it's nice that the politics are not a part of this process. It is a system which is based upon criteria which all people have an equal standing. So thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I have one final comment. I know Janice made a comment that the best applications came from District 4, but I know I'm very proud of my district and the applications of which we're submitting. And I think that everyone is proud of their own, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Well, the only thing I have to say finally, in talking to Jeff about this, I noticed there were some repeat recipients this year. And I have encouraged Jeff to go back to the Youth Commission and encourage those folks to do something else, do something different, look outside of what they've been doing to see if we, you know, for the next year. Not this year, but next year. That entertain a motion?
I'll move for approval. Second.
Moved by Ennis, second by Worthley. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. If you would, pass our thanks on to the remainder of the planning or the Youth Commissioners. And because the stack of work they had to read, I believe, was about this tall for each Commissioner. Lot of reading. Okay, we'll move into our public comment period. Anybody wishing to address the board on an item that is not on today's agenda but under the purview of the board, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. I don't see anybody coming forward for public comment time, so we will go to Board of Supervisors Matters. Supervisor Vanderpool.
I just wanted to follow up on a comment that I made last week about the San Joaquin Valley Insurance Authority. We had that meeting last Friday, very, very positive meeting. And we look forward to working with and developing a relationship with Fresno County to see how we can continue to maintain favorable health premiums and health costs for our employees. So I'm very excited about that, just wanted to put that out.
Supervisor Worthley.
Chairman, this afternoon I'll be going to Sacramento. There's a meeting scheduled with the Governor concerning the Williams-Simak contract subventions. My understanding is that there will be, at least the goal was to have one supervisor from each of the San Joaquin Valley Counties at this meeting. There will also be one banker and one ag commissioner. And the purpose is to try to encourage the Governor to restore the subvention to the Williams-Simak contract from the state of California. I think we all recognize it's an uphill battle, given the state's financial situation, but it's one that we are dedicated to attempting to try to restore because for Tulare County, it means $3.5 million out of our general fund and on an ongoing basis. So it's a very critical matter to us, and so we'll see what kind of success we have with Mr. Schwarzenegger.
Wish you $3.2 million worth of good luck. Supervisor Sheeta.
Yesterday, the board had the pleasure of meeting down at the mural, the World War II mural on Mooney Boulevard. And we were there to dedicate a statue. And the statue is a fallen soldier's cross, and I believe that it's very, well, I believe, I know it's very impressive. And if you have a chance, please stop by and look at the mural and look at the new statue we have. Connie Conway was also there, Assemblywoman Connie Conway, and she was able to pass a bill through the legislature and signed by the Governor to make that part of the highway going south designated as the Greatest Generation Highway. So it's been named and will be signed as the Greatest Generation Highway. On a serious note, we are having some issues, not the county, but TCAG's having some issues of reconnecting the trail between the city of Tulare and the city of Visalia. That trail was the old Santa Fe right-of-way. So that is one of the reasons TCAG is working so hard on the rail issue. Once you remove rail or you lose the right-of-way, it's extremely difficult, if not impossible, to replace that rail. It's proven to be extremely difficult just to put a pedestrian path in. And it's just, and that is extreme, is a lot easier to put a pedestrian path in versus put a train, railroad tracks and a train back through an old right-of-way. I'd like to talk on the lighter side a little bit about football. My alma mater, Strathmore, won the Division VI championship, and I'm very proud of Strathmore. It's the first time in 11 years that they've won this title. I remember when I was a senior, our team probably had the worst record in Strathmore High School history.
They'd wear helmets back then, Supervisor.
And you remember back then?
It was a long time, but it was after yours. But we have a unique football game coming up this Friday. And we have two football, ex-football players, one from Dinuba and one from Porterville. And Porterville and Dinuba are playing for the division championship. And Supervisor Ennis and Supervisor Worthley. We should make this game a little more exciting. And I think a public wager or something would be in order.
I suggested yesterday a one-on-one basketball match between Supervisor Worthley and Supervisor Ennis.
Supervisor Ennis declined.
I didn't play basketball, by the way.
But I think it's really exciting that our teams have done so well in Tulare County in the division finals. These division finals go to Tehachapi, they go up north to Fresno, and we've done very well. So I congratulate our young athletes.
Well, I'm kind of proud of our local team, too. I know Steve is. They're going to be meeting this week in Dinuba. Just depends on who shows up. You know, Porterville went to Tehachapi last week, and Tehachapi hadn't lost a home game up there in 10 years. And Porterville beat them 28-14. So if the right team shows up, it should be a heck of a game. So I'm, good luck to the Emfers and good luck to the Porterville High Panthers, and we have a good game.
I hope you have good referees, too.
Yeah, I do, too. That health meeting we went to last week, Pete was a little modest there. You know, he was voted the vice chair, so he'll be representing Tulare County as the vice chair on that committee. So congratulations to you on that. Later on the week, I'll be going to California Hot Springs Wednesday night to have a kind of a town hall meeting up there. And then Friday, I'll be having a meeting at Camp Nelson with those residents up there and kind of a state and federal and county issues that were up there. So it's like a busy week ahead.
Better get your four-wheel drive going.
Yeah, I don't know, we may have to cancel that meeting up there if the storms. And hopefully, I hope we have to. I hope we've got about three or four feet of snow up there, so good luck. That's all I have.
Speaking of football, I think the last time Mount Whitney, which is my alma mater, won the cowhide was the year I played.
Well, Chairman, I just might, I appreciate that being brought up by Mr. Sheeta. I can speak for Dinuba. This is the first time they have been a Valley championship game since 1973. And before that, my junior year in high school, we were Valley champions in 1969. So it's been a long time, and I know it's going to be a great contest. Both teams come in with the same record, and of course, they're in different leagues, but we're all Division III ball. So it's going to be a great game. I'm looking forward to it. I'll be up spotting in the announcer's booth. And everyone that's come to Dinuba's enjoyed our new turf. It's a great facility to play on. Doesn't matter if it rains or not because you won't be slipping and sliding out there.
It's kind of a Boise State deal, or what?
It's not blue, it's green. We bleed green in Dinuba.
It does sound like there will be a sniper involved. Okay, we will, before we go to the consent calendar, item number 30 is going to be pulled and heard next week. So we'll not hear item 30, which is our last untimed item. And we will go to our consent calendar. We have a request to pull item number 6. Board, do we need to pull any other items? Any items from the public need to be pulled for separate consideration. Entertain a motion now?
Move, approval, second.
Moved by Vanderpool, second by Ennis. Consent calendar approved. Item number 6. I see Rita Woodard and Hiley Wallace making their way up.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. My name is Hiley Wallace. I'm Chief Deputy Treasurer Tax Collector for Tulare County. I'm here to give you a briefing on item number 6. We entered into an agreement, or "we" meaning the tax collector, entered into an agreement through the purchasing agent for bid for assets, which is an online through the purchasing agent for bid for assets, which is an online bidding forum for tax sales. And it's used by just about every county in the state. It opens it up to make it, you know, worldwide actually for bidding. It allows us to reduce our cost, give more exposure to the sale and, which means more, potentially more, well, more profit for the owner who, who we are selling the property for. At the, currently we have 160 parcels on our list, we have 100 possibly going to be, to the site and with, and the end result will be 25 to 30 to the sale. So, that, that's basically our rundown.
Chairman, Hailey, I think one of the issues that was raised by council was that there is, it wasn't clear from this, there is a fee attached to that, as I recall, if somebody exercises this, the county would incur a fee of $75, is that how it works?
The county, well, the initial fee is $75, but it's attached to the property and will either be collected through the redemption or through the sale.
Okay, and I think that, that was not clear in the, in the item before us today, which is one of the reasons why we had it pulled, so you could make that clear to us. And obviously, as you say, the fact that it broadens the scope of, of the auction to the world as opposed to somebody showing up at a given location to bid on something means potentially a much better pool of, of people to apply or try to, try to gain the access to these properties. The other thing was, you made the comment it will benefit the property owner, but sometimes it benefits the county. Because sometimes these properties don't sell for what's owed on them when we get looking off past taxes and other assessments that have been levied against the property. So, so there may be a direct benefit to the county as well in terms of getting higher returns for, for the sale of these properties. So, thank you.
Chairman, in conversation with our ATR this morning, they're thinking outside the box, you were talking about innovation earlier, in order to lower the fee further.
Oh, yes, we are, next year we may go along with the area counties for a account, or they call it a San Joaquin Valley sale. So that will reduce our $75 fee further because it's based on the number of parcels that go to, go to sale. So that in, last time it included Kings, Madera and Merced and Fresno possibly will be in on it as well as ourselves.
Only question I have for the day of, when you have the day of sale, there's a $5,000 refundable deposit, is that deposit refunded that day, handed back to them?
It is re, it is refunded in a couple of days. Actually, I think it takes two days to get the money back and it's basically given back to them the same way they, they deposit it, whether it be by check or electronic fund transfer. It's, it's quicker than we can do it. And the, the sale is actually two days. It's not a one-day sale. It's open for longer than that.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds like eBay.
Any other questions? Entertained a motion?
Move approval, Chairman?
Moved by Worthley, second by Vanderpoel. Thank you. And it looks like we are just on time to have our time public hearing, request from our fire department to approve fire hazard abatement cost recovery.
Good morning Chairman and members of the Board.
Can you pull the microphone around there? There you go, thank you.
Now can you hear me?
Better.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Cindy Delman and I'm a fire inspector for Tulare County Fire Department. Tulare County Fire Department is requesting the Board to order the costs associated with the abatement of fire hazards to be recorded in the office of the county recorder as a lien. The contractor's costs plus administrative fees came to a total of $13,316.78 for the cleanup of 14 parcels throughout Tulare County. We request that the county auditor place such costs on the county tax roll as special assessments. Lastly, we request the Board to adopt the attached resolution with Exhibit A, the parcel analysis. The contractor's cost was $9,662.78, the administrative $3,604. Do you have any questions for me?
As I noticed a lot of these this time, like I did in those four, have dump fees, like we're picking up a lot of trash as well as just knocking weeds down this time.
There's a, we have a huge rubbish problem right now and that was considerable number of fires, or rubbish fires this year. We're really working on that problem.
Any questions?
Most of them are in my district.
I wasn't going to comment on that.
What's that mean?
Are there any real questions? First half. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the Board on this item, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Seeing no one here, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the Board for action.
Move for approval.
Moved by Innes, second by Worthley. unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a good day.
You too.
You smile like that when you're telling these folks they're going to have a bill, do you? Okay, good. Okay, our final item on today's open agenda is item number 29, a request from Health and Human Service Agency to approve additional staffing.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning.
Members of the Board, John Davis for your county's Health and Human Service Agency. We have before you a, a set of personnel adjustments. Board is well aware, the economy has taken a turn for the worst a year or so ago and our caseloads have increased, that is the consequence and why we're here today. About 40% increase in our food stamps enrollment, about 30% in our Medi-Cal enrollment and about 10% in Tulare Works, and that's pretty sizable. And as you know, we made cuts last year to make up for sales tax. What's happened, of course, is that as caseloads increase, the federal and state governments have increased the amount of money now available to us to meet the new caseload growth. So, the larger part of this is really just a request to bring us up very conservatively because we think these adjustments are in flux even as we look to next year's awards from our Governor. So, we're really kind of concerned that we do something because we've got increased caseloads, but we don't do too much and that we play this on the safe side. So that we're asking for these several positions in Tulare Works and we think that is a conservative request. The next set is a set of changes we're asking for in aging and adult services. Those changes were made by their governing board last year when they reduced their program and they have been reducing it for about 18 months or so. And they actually found a, a better way to deliver meals rather than run a kitchen of their own. These meals are now prepared in Fresno and distributed to us. So, some of the duties have changed, some of the staff has retired, gone, gone away in that, in that sense and we've actually had to readjust how we're doing business. So we're asking to kind of straighten up our supervision. We've not rehired a nutrition director, we want to get a supervisor in there at a lower level, we want someone to look over the social service side of this. As you recall, or at least the members of the Board, when we made our first set of reductions, we actually no longer have a unit manager in that program, overseeing that program. So we've made changes all along, this is, in our view, just cleanup. Same is true for the Health Department, we're just trying to find where we can stabilize and kind of move through the rest of the year and wait for whatever the Governor's going to do in the next round. So we'd ask your Board at this time to adopt this resolution, add those positions. We'll probably wait for about a month before we fill any of them, just so we can see what the Governor's message is. But we'd like to have at least this piece in place if, so we can move forward if the message is good.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. I, I noticed in reading the detail on this that there were a couple of positions that were, where the stimulus funding was mentioned. I know that the stimulus funding is a temporary program or the ARA funding. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're not hiring any of these positions based on that funding that's going to evaporate and not be there at a later date where we're going to have, you're going to have to come back before us and we're going to have to be laying people off. So I, I just would like you to clarify that and where the funding will come from once the funding has expired.
The funding is there now and I, it will be there, hopefully. This, the funding that we're using is stable. The ARA issue is, and I guess it's, you know, in part here to recognize or have your Board recognize, there's a huge spike in workload as we apply for grants. We've had several that we've had to bring in too late, in fact, because we're writing all the time to get stimulus money into the community. But that isn't what the staffing is, is based on. It just means that we'll, we'll spike in the workload and you need to be aware that it's a, it's a pole for the, until September 30th, as you point out, which point, and you're absolutely correct, this money disappears. So we're planning for that as best we can, we're planning for where our sales tax is, we're planning for where we think the grants are. And we've actually discovered that there are some errors even in our grant awards and how the numbers are coming out. I doubt whether they'll be fixed before the Governor's message comes. Again, another reason for caution. So we're trying to take all this into account. I feel very comfortable that this is an extremely conservative request in terms of staff. And it's in, as you know, I guess I should make the point for your constituencies, it's in areas in which we've gotten new money and it is in our form, it is in our grant allocations. It's not the stimulus money, it's not predicated on our sales tax or those kinds of revenues.
Great, thank you.
And one of the ways, I, I had an interview last week with a reporter and I, you know, the, because it's difficult for people to understand the silos, the way we get our money. You know, and my comment was, well, the state gives with one hand and they take away with the other and they're oftentimes different pots or different pieces of money. And so when we receive an increase in this pot of money, and so we're talking about spending down the increases of the pots of money that, that we've received in hiring these positions.
That's exactly it. And the complexity, of course, is that I think the last time we reported to your Board, there were just slightly over 240 different pots. So, you're, you're literally getting cut in some, as you point out, and getting increases in others and it's all response to what's going on in our economy.
Could this create an opportunity for some of the, the folks that, that did get laid off earlier this year, could this create an opportunity for some of those folks to come back?
It's our process internally through HR and D that all of those folks that were laid off get notified. They, we go through that process. It doesn't mean that we have positions we can hire them for, but if they're qualified or they went out of the job that we're hiring for, they are notified. And then we interview from them and people that are, are in the area new that have also lost their jobs and are qualified. And we select from that group.
Great, thank you. Any other questions?
Well, just one comment too, Mr. Chairman. To me, it's a little bit like ADA at school levels, average daily attendance, you, you, schools receive their compensation based upon the number of students. In this case, as we have a workload increase, and it's not a good news story because it's the bad economy, which means we have more people qualifying for these benefits than there is an allocation which comes from the state that's directly proportional to that. So, I, I, I don't think that's a difficult concept to understand. I know for some folks, they think of some sort of huge vault that all money is equal and we know that that's not the case, but that it's categorical. In this case, the category is growing because of our economy and therefore we qualify for more funding. But it does provide employment opportunities for some, but it really is a result of, of a very poor economy that that's happening. So, I think that's comprehensible.
Entertained a motion then?
Move for approval.
Moved by Innes, second by Vanderpoel.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Counsel, I know we have closed session items listed.
Mr. Chairman, item A is off agenda, items B and C are on your Board's agenda, I do not anticipate any announcements.
Thank you, we're going to adjourn to closed session.